in our nation's history and whereas the city of Palm Coast appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support they have earned. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that August the 6th, 2024 be officially designated as Purple Heart Day.
It is with a great deal of humility and honor that I accept this for all of my brothers' arms. And I just ask that those of you who are willing and able, and not only you veterans, we have a very significant group of organizations here in this county that serve our veterans that provide an amazing amount of services. They are all looking for more boots in the ground like they always are. And we can, we can use your help for those of you who are like to. There's the DAV, there's the VFW, the American Legion, and there are some others I can't bring to mind right now, but those are the major three. And they are, they do serve our veteran community proudly and effectively. So I ask you to think about that, give somebody a call. Dave Leiden at the county office, Veteran Services Office will direct you if you have any questions. And I bid you a good evening, have a safe home.
One more thing, if you would just, if you would just point out Heroes Park, we have a special memorial there that folks can visit where we have our ceremony because not everybody may be aware of that.
Very good. Heroes Park is located just west of the library that's on Palm Coast Parkway. It's not easily seen from the street, but it is well marked. Okay? If you have some time, you need some personal reflection time. If you just want to go out there and walk around and get some of your, get some of your walking around, there's some beautiful memorials out there. The, the Military Order of the Purple Heart has a beautiful memorial there for, for reflection for those, those who qualify to receive the Purple Heart. And also there are other organizations recognized there. And just go take a look around because it is a unique part of this great city. And there's a lot of effort that goes into maintaining it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and for all the staff to do that. So it's a, it's a lovely place for reflection.
Very good.
staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns. Please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table. Near the agendas are available from the communications and marketing director who was seated in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite any members of the public that would like to make public comment on any item that does not follow in the agenda. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alphon.
Bring this closer, bring this closer that the people online can hear you perfectly. Bring it closer, don't bend, bring it closer.
Is that possible? Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Alphon. Council members, my name is Roger Cressy. I'm from C-section in Palm Coast. We've spoken before. I'm a rep, here as a representative of the CCC, the Canal Community Coalition. The Canal Community Coalition is continuing to grow and remains enthusiastic about seeing STR ordinances in place as soon as possible. Tonight, our members are mostly going to withhold comment on future ordinances apart from this general statement. Four members from our political committee met with city management team this past Tuesday and shared our initial citizen recommendations for STR ordinances. The group felt that it was well received and the meeting was productive. Most of our recommendations are drawn from ordinances already in place in other cities in Florida, with a strong preference for those in Flagler County and Indian Rock Beach. We were grateful that you committed last month to making new ordinances for short-term rentals a priority, so we were disappointed to hear that the STR discussion is now delayed to the September workshop agenda. We again ask you all to press for expediency. We will email our working document of STR recommendations requesting that you read these ahead of the workshop. One major theme in our recommendations is that the weight of responsibility and cost of short-term rental management falls squarely on the shoulders of owners and managers rather than the city of Palm Coast law enforcement or those who have become the de facto managers, the residents of Palm Coast. One excellent example we found comes from Hollywood, Florida, which has put into place a dedicated 24/7 hotline. When the hotline receives an STR complaint, the operator immediately phones the registered STR manager, who must then address the issue within one hour of notification. The hotline is more affordable for the city and provides an enormous encouragement to owners to have good practices in place ahead of time to minimize the need for these calls. We're currently receiving feedback from our members about our initial recommendations that we presented to city management, and we are adjusting these accordingly. As Mayor Alphon stated in the last meeting, we're looking forward to Palm Coast leading the way in Florida with a thorough, well-designed set of ordinances that return our neighborhoods to our residents and that value the property rights of homeowners in single-family zoned neighborhoods above those of unrestricted businesses. Thank you, sir.
Very good. We thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
My name is Kirk Whittington, 65, Roundthorn Drive. I'm a recent resident of Palm Coast, having moved here from San Francisco recently. This town checks all the boxes for me. It's an excellent town. I've done my research. There's one thing I didn't really have time to research, and that's because something has happened at four o'clock in the morning, and that's just not the time I was looking at my house. Now that I've been sleeping in the house, I've found out the one problem that I think we can all fix together. There's a driver of a vehicle that has no muffler that drives up Ravenwood, and he drives up there between four and 4:15 and 4:30 every morning. And this is not just having no muffler, this is [BANG]. And then unfortunately, in the last two weeks, he has also developed backfire. So every time he shifts his manual transmission, [BANG], boom, bah. Okay? I can't sleep through that. I can't sleep through much of anything. As fate would have it, I was on Belt Air two days ago, and driving down Belt Air towards State Road and 100, and I don't see them, but I just say, I know that car. It was him. And what it is, and I came to a perfect explanation, here's what he's done. It's a young kid, and it doesn't surprise me that a young kid would do this. He's taken a Honda Accord and he's cut it down. Some of the kids do this. They take out the springs, they take out the shock absorbers, and they put it one inch away from the pavement. In so doing, they don't have room for a muffler. So they just take the muffler off, they take the exhaust pipe off, they have, the exhaust comes straight out of the manifold. It's extremely loud. I kind of wondered, is this kid deaf or is he just going to go deaf? I don't care. Now, I'm retired, so the sleep, I get my sleep in four-hour shifts, that's okay, I can nap in the afternoon, but he affects dozens of people as he goes down. And I wonder why he goes down Ravenwood and then sort of, I can hear him, and it changes his shift as he goes down room fire. The reason why is you have a couple of areas where your paving has subsidence, and clearly he can't go through there at a very fast speed because if he does, he's going to throw sparks at the bottom and he's going to ruin his car. And I thought, the city's got to be able to do something about this. I looked at your ordinances. I've, I've worked in government before, I know how to read ordinances. You don't have an ordinance regarding the noise level. You have regarding noise at construction sites, but I couldn't find anything that would set an objective decibel rating for what is an appropriate or inappropriate noise level. So I'd boldly suggest to staff and maybe the city manager to do some research to find a decibel reading that is reasonable. In so doing, you can create a law that you can pass on to the sheriff so that when the sheriff does find some of these people out there, he will then have the law where he can possibly, I don't know, let's be reasonable, he can just put the car on the back with a flatbed trailer, haul it to impound, set a court time, a reasonable court, say maybe six months from now, and then that time, the kid will be able to maybe find out what he has to do. But for all you residents of Palm Coast, and for me especially, do something about this, please.
Very good.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Tramarchi. I am a longtime board member and past president.
Wendy, if you could just pull it down to you, there you go.
Is that good?
Thank you.
All right. I'm a longtime board member and past president with the Vero Beach and Indian River County Humane Society. Having recently moved into the Palm Coast Flagler County, I decided to volunteer at their, at the Flagler Humane Society. With my first trip into the building, red flags immediately stood out. In a handful of subsequent visits, these red flags have very much escalated. Because of time constraints, I will give you some bullet points. One, all animals, whether sick, injured, or aggressive, being surrendered along with residents, families visiting the shelter, all enter and exit through the same doorway into a crowded reception area. Very dangerous practice. Dogs with intestinal issues, blood in the stool because of stress and inconsistent diet of donated food or improper diet for dogs with allergies. Cats housed in hallways and dogs living in crates on the floor. All assets, including their building, are aging and in need of very costly repairs and remodeling, are way past due in many areas of the shelter. Air conditioning does not regulate temperatures in the kennels. Each kennel is a different temperature. Contagious dogs with kennel cough, which is now present in the shelter. Besides not quarantining, these dogs have been in a playgroup running in 100-degree heat when protocol requires 10-14 day quarantine in a calm, dry area with short potty breaks and medical treatment. The vet of record with the state for that shelter operates his own mobile vet practice. The board, it doesn't show online or anywhere that there is an elected president, I'm sorry, elected treasurer of that board. Who is that? And with their charter, there has to be executive officers. There's also a husband and wife team. You don't, you don't do that on a nonprofit board. Website says for transparency, they, they show the audits. These are not audits. They are tax returns with figures given to their accountant, their paid accountant. Do they know the difference? This nonprofit does not have a foundation or an endowment to ensure sustainability. How can you run a nonprofit without those moves for capital, monies for capital improvement or emergencies? Shelter is over capacity, and where is their strategic plan for this rapidly growing community and their animals? Finally, two suggestions. The first being that the shelter be required to have an accredited independent audit of at least the last two years, every year going forward. Also, Matty Spundt at the University of Florida has a free consultation and strategy for all shelters that are, that would be, that they would be able to do, and they are eligible for that.
Very good. I thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Anne Thompson. I started volunteering.
Pull that, pull that down so it's comfortable for you. There you go.
Good. I started volunteering at Flagler Humane Society in January of this year. I've just retired from owning a doggy daycare and boarding facility for the last 15 years where I took care of 80 to 100 dogs daily. I'm also a dog trainer. I felt in volunteering I had a lot to offer the shelter. I offered my training services to be given to all adopted dogs going to their new homes. Many people don't understand the length of time it takes a dog to de-stress from the kennel environment, and then they return the dog. I was willing to give a free in-home evaluation along with numerous follow-up phone calls to help new owners to understand the concept of this time. My offer was not accepted. I now come to the story of Guapo. We volunteers have witnessed many things that disturbed us, but I think the euthanizing of Guapo was what made us all want to act. I arrived at the shelter that day and I spoke directly to the director face-to-face and asked why this had happened to him. She said he was not good with children. It did not say that anywhere on his bio, in six months in the kennel, and he could have gone to a home with children at any time. This is pure negligence on their part. The lack of communication there is huge. For example, if Guapo's temperament to children had changed, why then was a meet-and-greet set up with a child involved? Guapo lunged at this child, did not bite, and his actions sealed his fate, and I believe he was set up to fail. It is time for change at the shelter. The days when shelters could randomly kill dogs has gone. In 2020, it was reported that 67% of homes in Flagler County had at least one dog. Many have two, three, and four. Now add the fact that the population is going to increase, and you have one ill-run shelter to handle all these dogs. They're man's best friend. I believe dogs are not evaluated correctly on arrival before being put up for adoption. For example, if a dog is not child-friendly, dog-friendly, a resource garder, fearful of men, et cetera, a no to any of these questions should not mean a death sentence to that dog. It means they need help and future adopters need to be made aware of these issues. These dogs need to be evaluated on a regular basis, not just once and then done. The highly stressful environment and weeks of months can cause a lot of behavioral changes. We also have a lot of questions about the practice for euthanizing dogs and the testing that is done. Number one should be by a veterinarian and a behavioral consultant. Thank you for your time.
Very good. I thank you for your comments. And the next speaker, please.
Thank you. Camenor, Palm Coast. I walked dogs five days a week for about two and a half years and actually served on the Board of Directors in 2021, 2022. During that time, I initiated a quarterly meeting with volunteers so that they could air grievances and suggestions on how to approve operations at the shelter. Little to nothing was ever done about any of those things when they were brought forward to management and to the board. After that time, I was deemed to have a conflict of interest because my wife was actually a volunteer at the shelter, and so I was asked not to conduct those meetings anymore. You'll probably hear that recently, three volunteers were terminated, asked not to return for bringing grievances forward. So I resigned my board position in early 2023 because I found the organization just totally resistant to any kind of positive change. And I think you'll hear some of those issues in the speakers that follow me. Sadly, I left 15 months ago. I don't have current information, but many of these things you'll hear about existed 15 months ago, and nothing's been done. On the second point, I think with the explosive growth of Palm Coast and Flagler County, this shelter is often maxed out. The first speaker mentioned, there's oftentimes dogs and cats stored in small crates in the community room, in the hallways, actually in the employee restroom. The shelter is maxed out. With the growth, it's time to start considering a second shelter in this, in this area. I would suggest, I moved here 10 years ago from Brevard County. There is a municipal shelter down there, and it's actually under the sheriff's office. I know our city has a dog officer staff, but all the dog officers report through the sheriff in Brevard County. Not a bad idea. If not a municipal shelter, I think in the near term, maybe we could depend more on some of the other nonprofit rescues in, in the area. And my particular favorite is, is Saving Missing Animals Rescue Team under Ms. Carolyn Johnson, and I know she works very closely with Barbara Grossman and the animal control team here in Palm Coast. So I'd order the city to consider supporting some of those groups more. Thank you.
Good. I thank you for your comment. And the next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Saris, and I was here at your last meeting. So I was volunteering at the Flagler Humane Society, and myself and two other passionate volunteers were terminated because they euthanized Guapo. He was a two-year-old beautiful dog, one of the volunteers' favorites. He was euthanized out in the back where they keep the freezers, where they put their animals' bodies. There's about three or four of them out there. And they euthanized him out in the heat. It was when the gnats were terrible. And I believe that if somebody has to die for any reason, they should die in dignity and comfort. So something has to be done about that. I went and spoke to the director the day before the last meeting because I had commented R.I.P., and I had listed some of the dogs' names that I know were euthanized. I volunteered for about a little over a year and a half, and I personally know of 31 dogs that were euthanized. I do not know of the others that I did not know about. So she happened to go in her file and pull out a list that she made for me of 26 of the dogs that were euthanized that I had mentioned. And of these, there was, according to them, 15 bites at the shelter. Okay? And that's why they were euthanized. Okay? Now, they also, it's record, they have felons that were working for him, that, them, that they just terminated also, I was told by her. And it was for domestic violence. He had threatened to kill a family in my neighborhood. And he lashed out against two others, they can tell you about them, and about their incident with him. And so if this person is downright mean to people, what is he doing to dogs? Because now all of a sudden, all these dogs are being euthanized because you have this domestic violence maniac, and he goes into their tiny little space that they're entitled to, and who knows how they're treated, but they're, they're in defense if they're afraid. And this is why I think he changes their behavior. And of the others, there was eight seniors that were of eight years old and up that they euthanized. One particularly, Coco and Callie, were a bonded pair, nine and 10 years old. That is not the average lifespan of a dog. So if all they're going to do is euthanize, why do they accept any dogs? I would just like to suggest to residents to please try to find somewhere else to bring your dogs to if you don't want them euthanized. And also, as far as the monies the city's going, giving to them, I would like to request a forensic audit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Sue Rowe. I'd like to bring attention to the neglect at Flagler Humane Society as well as the dogs euthanized that could have been adopted. I personally offered to foster an 11-year-old sweet pit mix named Precious. I told, and the name goes with her. It did. I told the Kennel and Adoptions Manager of my interest in caring for Precious, fostering her. I told her I had an obligation for the next two weeks. Unfortunate lives. Unfortunately, they euthanized her before that two weeks was up. Too often, dogs are euthanized before they get a chance to be adopted. I believe the Flagler Humane Society numbers, if accurately reported, would make them a kill shelter versus a no-kill shelter based on percentages. Obviously, they don't want to lose all their funding of a no-kill shelter that a no-kill shelter receives. The county stated at their meeting, council meeting yesterday, that they visited the shelter by appointment. If someone's coming to my house and I'm, I'm going to have guests, I'm having it ready. Did they stage it? Maybe it's time the county and the city donate thou, that, that do at this time donate thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money to make, to make, maybe it's time for them to make surprise visits at different times of the day as well as different days. More times than not, the dogs are not walked and kennels are not clean. The attention that we are trying to bring to the city of Palm Coast and Flagler County residents is accountability. Audits on both dogs and finances at the Flagler Humane Society. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Jeffrey Seib. My comments tonight have to do with the financial order of business of setting a tax millage rate. The total budget for Palm Coast has increased almost 20% a year, and yet we are increasingly having difficulties making ends meet. Historically, we are a low property tax city, much lower than neighboring cities, as your financial people have shown us in comparison with other cities here in Florida. So do we march forward with tax increases every year to get more in line with other cities, or do we celebrate our singularity as the lowest millage rate around? But is it a two-edged sword where on the one hand, the low taxes bring in folks looking for this kind of value, while at the same time, their very presence necessitates higher taxes for the government services they require? We also know other government costs are going up. Garbage fees will go up, stormwater and sewage, 3% in 2024, and now I believe another 3% for 2025. County tax increases are adding to the pile, and now the city must set a millage rate for property taxes. The recent council vote of a rate of 4.2194 as the maximum millage rate possible is actually the lower than last year's rollback rate of 4.2570. More homes and higher home value have generated an increase in 2024 tax receipts to the city of about 13% over 2023. Vice Mayor Danko has pushed for a rollback rate of 3.9961 for 2025, which the council did not consider. If we split the difference between the max rate of 4.2194 and Councilmember Danko's rate of 3.9961, we get a millage rate of 4.1078, which I think is a rate we can live with. After all, from 2020 to 2023, the average millage rate was 4.6545 a year. The 4.1078 number is a 12% decrease in property tax rate over those four years and last year's rate of 4.272570. To achieve this rate, however, may require some cuts in the budget requests by city departments that was presented by staff at the Millage Rate Council meeting. I would recommend the 2025 budget for funding with what I call essential city services such as roads, stormwater, drainage, waste, and water treatment plants to receive the funding called for. City departments not putting a shovel in the ground should hold any increases to 5%. The planning department, economic development, and IT services, 5%. With no new planning manager, administrative generalists, or public work assistant manager. In this era of tight money, our current city management personnel must manage more while providing the same level of service to the community. I hope that this compromise is something the council will consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Ken McDowell. I live over in the C-section, and I'm here tonight. I'm sure you can understand why. One year and six days ago, I stood at this very podium and demanded a forensic audit be performed on this city, government, and the city council. A year and a week ago. Since that very night, the council retired, they voted, you came back and voted five, nothing to approve it. Then you got briefed because you had conflated it with a financial audit. So you got briefed, and the following Tuesday morning, what happened? You backed out, three of the five of you backed out, saying, oh, it's too expensive, it's this or that. And then during my speak, speak that night, I also mentioned the law firm that used to represent this city from the time it was incorporated for 25 years. I asked the question, how many millions of dollars that law firm had made in the time they'd been up here representing this city? They're from Orlando, all on expense accounts. Two weeks after that, the law firm comes back and says, we're not going to renew our contract. Okay? Since then, we've gotten a new city attorney, and everything has just been slow-walked. Nothing's happened. You've done nothing to satisfy these people back here and around this city to approve and fund a city forensic audit, a complete one. and fund a city forensic audit, a complete one. Why? Why? What are you afraid of? Because I hear names like Douglas, Burn Dog, Chimento, et cetera, being thrown in with all you guys. I don't hear a whole lot of John and Jane Doe being affiliated with you guys. So where are you getting your money? From Douglas, Burn Dog, et cetera, et cetera? Okay? Chimento, let's throw that in there. Many people think this city government is compromised, I being one of them. Not necessarily you folks up there, but it could be. But this city government is compromised up, down, sideways, all around. It needs a forensic audit. Once again, I am demanding it. You guys have got to approve and fund a forensic audit. The people deserve it. It's our money that you guys are spending and this city government is spending. How dare you not respond to the people that are paying your hundred-and-forty-one percent raise? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am. No, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Angie. I live in the B-section. I'm here also to demand a forensic audit. There's things that just put things off that just aren't quite kosher, things that are happening. I mean, we can go back to '22 when you had a $6.9 million surplus, and you brought all these large vehicles. That's fine, but you didn't even utilize the state contract to do it. You bought a hundred golf carts in a height of COVID-19. Why do we need a hundred golf carts? What did you do with a hundred golf carts? You know, when you all voted to give yourselves a raise, that showed us, the people, that you don't care about the citizens because we weren't allowed to vote whether we felt you were worth the raise. You took it upon yourselves to give yourselves a raise. So I asked the city to stand up here and demand that forensic audit because this is an incompetent-run city. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's John Mukowski, 47 Christopher Court. The second time I've ever addressed a city council meeting in my life. The last one was on July 2nd. I want to thank you, mayor, and council members, city manager, for listening to the canal coalition and directing the leaders to pursue the ordinance. I believe you are doing what all of the people are saying in this matter, and I don't envy your jobs one bit. Okay? My daughter, over twenty years ago, moved here. Since then, we have pretty much brought down nine families to Palm Coast because of the charm that this community had. And I say "had" because things are rapidly changing. We hope to address these problems and work with you so that we can get a good solution for the problems at hand. I want you to keep this at the forefront, these ordinances to be developed because we are still dealing with things on a daily basis. Tonight, on my way here, a neighbor was waving to us. My wife and I rolled down the window to say what she wanted. They were people, they're either the owners or managers of a short-term rental next door to me. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight at all because I think Roger said it all. Okay? But she wasn't waving, she was giving us multiple fingers because of me complaining or submitting a case about the way the trash has been handled in this short-term rental. This has been a thorn in our side. They own three of them here, as I stated before. They are not following the rules, and I believe Barbara and the code enforcement is trying to do what they can, and I've seen a good effort on their part. I want to thank them for that. So what I'm just trying to say is that I love it here. I want to keep living here, but the results of this ordinance will determine whether I stay here or leave. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Peter Bezette, C-section. I'm all for this ordinance that for the Airbnbs and short-term rentals. I think it's a good thing for the city, but I also think we should think of, we're always looking for making money, and that we're short on budget and this and that. I think that the Airbnbs and the long-term rentals should have to follow the same rules as Airbnbs with fees and everything else. I know they don't pay taxes for their Airbnb. Airbnbs pay taxes, short-term rentals don't. But I think there has to be, they need to be the same rules for both of them. So if we're going to do an ordinance, let's try to put both of them into one and knock out two rocks with one stone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker, please.
James D. I'm with this fellow over here. I complained about this before. The cars with the loud mufflers in the back firing, six o'clock in the morning, eleven o'clock at night, eleven-thirty at night. I think we should be able to report a plate number and a vehicle make to the sheriff, and they go investigate it because obviously they're not going to lie and say it's not my car if it's making noise. So we need to have something done about that noise. Now, other information I have here is based on, I've tried to verify, so I hope I'm correcting it, but we did send, so they sent a lobbyist to Tallahassee to get us money to fix and expand our roads, and they came back with a bunch of money for the western expansion and very little for our roads. Somehow, they got it reversed, got it backwards. So where did this so-called mistake come from? You know, we have a mayor who's a real estate broker backed by construction and developer companies. We need a forensic audit, like this guy said. We do. There's a lot of stuff going here, not just where, what taxes are we doing, but where are our taxes going? And also, last year, you all agreed to stop approving housing projects, that there are several major ones in the works. Later on the agenda, I think there's a presentation, a retreat project in Seminole Woodstown houses, one where they approved before or after a decision to stop building. Single-family homes being built on existing vacant lots is fine. We are neighbors, they kind of slowly develop, but these, but tearing down forests for large developments of inferior cooker-cutting homes and multifamily homes is just too much, especially multifamily homes, which congest our area and our outdated roads, which we need. I keep bringing that up. So just stop building the homes. If these people are here presenting for these things, just go home. Don't even approve them. Now, there is a rumor, I hope it's a rumor, I don't know, there's talk about a rumor of a beach tax for Palm Coast residents to help Flagler Beach restore their beaches. How would the Flagler Beach residents like having to pay a tax to maintain our swales, which at this point, this looks like it takes thirty years to do? So let them find their own funding. If they don't think they can find a way, contact the city of Wildwood, New Jersey, one of the biggest beach towns in the area, in the country. They still have a free beach. A lot of the other small towns have admissions and stuff like that, but if they can do it, Flagler Beach can do it, don't come to us for the tax. And as far as western expansion, forget about houses. We need more commonly-used businesses like gas station, mom and pop stores, restaurants, medical offices, things that would keep traffic away from the center of town, the Walmart area, and can leave congestion and get, just get more people relief in the roads until we get them fixed.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Joe Brunach, seven Courtney Court. I'm here because we were looking at some of the items in Palm Coast 2050, specifically, again, my pet peeve regarding the location of communication cell phone towers. It looks like there's been some sort of change that someone wants to put in here where it exactly says the installation of towers on these properties will only require administrative review. That is pretty nebulous, number one. Really doesn't say much as far as specifics. The Diamond Communications has tried and failed twice to put cell phone towers entirely too close or in the wrong locations. The reviews were from the planning board, which would have come to you for a vote. The more oversight on this, the better. Frankly, the 2017 wireless master plan may need some updates. At meetings, the amount, distance from the cell phone towers was mentioned at one hundred and fifty feet. Today, that is out of date. That will not pass muster. Most other towns across America are asking two thousand feet, up to three thousand feet away from any home, school, church business. These are not meant to be put in neighborhoods. Yet, I wonder if we had made the change in our town regarding this hundred-and-fifty-foot rule. Seven years is a long time. With the development of these phone towers, they're much more powerful. One goes up with one carrier, then every other carrier is going to want to put their equipment on it, further increasing again. I'm no expert, but no one can tell me for a hundred percent sure that these are safe to be around, to be that close to. One hundred and fifty feet from it is, today, I think, outdated. While we're putting together this Palm Coast 2050 plan, this should be addressed, and at the very least, there should be more review rather than less review. It seems to me here that one administrator can make a decision independent of any kind of public review, and today, that is just not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And the next speaker, please.
Good evening. Candy Stevens, P-section. I came here today to talk about one thing, but I've been listening to everybody talking today, and you know how I am, I like to kind of paraphrase. So I also have had an issue at the Humane Society out there. I don't know if you guys recall, I have said several times, I've been up here, we need our own emergency animal, our own emergency animal hospital. The funds that you would get from that or that we could co-op from that would be amazing because it's expensive to go to St. Augustine. We could really compete with that. And I've talked to my vet and other vets, and they're willing to co-op time. So if we can co-op the time between the different vet offices, maybe a week at a time, so it's not all falling on one vet, I think that we could actually come up with something. We could do monthly shot clinics and stuff. They could make money from that. So there's different ways to fund that besides taxing the citizens because we all would use the services if they were better. I took my dog there one time to get a set of shots because I wanted to try it out. They put me in a room where a dog just had surgery. The dog was lying there in pain, crying, and I'm like, are you going to give the dog anything? Oh, no, he's fine. And my dogs, basically, my dog was traumatized when I left there. They don't have anything separate for where you take your animal in for an appointment or where you're bringing an animal in to drop it off, to abandon it there. So they need to keep all that stuff separate, and I would be willing to volunteer and help with that because I would make time for that. I came here to actually rescue animals, but I'm now involved in this kind of stuff. I also came here to talk about the short-term rental. I have had an issue on my street, actually next door to me, the people own it, don't live there. And I came home one night, and there was boom trucks. I'm driving down the street. I come home late because I work late, and there's all these reflectors going on like down my, I'm like, what is that? The whole yard, the whole driveway was parked with boom trucks, some type of construction equipment trucks. So in that short-term rental, you need to make sure that they're not allowed to have more than X amount of vehicles and no construction vehicles if you can include that in there. And then I also came to say that I think that a forensic audit is good, and I'm not saying that in an accusatory manner. I'm saying it because I think that you can find ways where we can save money, and we can put that money towards other things like the animal hospital, the swales. Like, I think that we can find ways to cut some of the fat off and use the money for better. We pay a lot to live here, and I don't mind to pay a lot, but I want what I pay for. The thing I came to talk about was the parade. I reached out to you, and I've reached out to you, but I don't have a way to reach out to you. I'm doing a nonpartisan get-out-the-vote parade this Saturday. We're leaving from here at eleven. It's about an hour and a half. It's a very scenic route. I've got it planned out real nicely. All the candidates are welcome. All people, Democrat, Republican, everybody's welcome. Red, white, and blue is the theme, getting out the vote. So I'd like to see everybody there. That's what I came to talk about.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Celia.
My name is Celia Puglisi. I live here since 1991. Briefly, I want to ask, because I ask you all by email as well, that in the comprehensive Plan 2050, first of all, I think it should be approved in 2025 by the new council. At least, we will have for sure two new people in the council. Second, in page twenty-seven, on policy one, two, three, five, one, two, three, four, five, they, like Mr. Joe Brunach says, it risks that any of these one hundred and fifty feet from any structure, horrible master plan, which I don't even recall, had any input from us, the affected residents back then, that now, this policy risks that this is to be approved only by the administrators. Excuse me, I do not trust very much our administrators sometimes. So honestly speaking, we need to have the input from the public. Now, the main thing which I come here today, besides reminding you that, we already had to fight two towers. We don't need to keep on fighting anymore. So that should be a way for the amount of feet that is safe for any residents, not one hundred and fifty feet from any structure. Okay, my main thing today is that I think I come here not for Humane Society, but at this point, I have to call it an inhuman society, what is transparent. I mean, this organization is private. The city has to check if ITT, their land was donated. ITT donated that. If this, ITT donated, it was for the community. It was for the animals of the community. And this city needs a municipal shelter where animals are really going to be sheltered, not euthanized. I have heard through the years some very particular stories myself, but it's been confirmed lately. Which shelter will ever decide to put three dedicated volunteers that are needed for these dogs? Otherwise, their pens are not clean, their water is not changed. We need a municipal shelter with this kind of growth that we have. We're going to have more animals. We pay taxes for that, mayor, and we need the service. If this was ignored until now by the county and by the city, it's because we have this private organization that cannot be oversight because it's private, then we need to take over the land. I understand a few years ago, from the donated land, they sold the front parcel for $350,000. You know, they don't need to sell parcels. We need more spaces for more animals other than killing them. So please, get involved seriously because what is happening to our animals, I speak from the community, we are animal lovers. We go around there, and we rescue, and we help and donate. So please do that.
Thank you for your comment. Joe.
Good evening. George Mail, Palm Coast. During the past storm, I looked on our website, the app, to see if there was going to be a meeting in case the storm stalled. There was no mention of it, and of course, it passed, though we have the meeting. I also looked to see if they had any notification where sandbags were available, and there was none. Jonathan Lord did interviews on all the TV stations, flight counters getting ready. Everybody should be prepared. We were expecting six inches of rain. None of the TV stations, they mentioned all the other localities, counties, municipalities, sandbags were available here. Nobody ever mentioned Palm Coast. Go to, you know, the Public Works Department, pick up sandbags if they wanted. So I'm asking, maybe in the future, we can notify all the TV stations and say, this is one of the locations where, if you live in Palm Coast, you can get sandbags. The other thing is, recently, the city put up signs for the school zone over at Buddy Taylor Middle School. They're solar-operated in the center esplanade and also on the right side. The ones that are in the center esplanades, going both north and south, are so close to the first tree that if somebody is driving and has tunnel vision just in the left lane, they will not see that blinking light for the school zone until they're already upon it. And many times, there are deputies there to pull you over and tell you you are going too fast and give you a ticket. So just if the city can do some pruning of those trees as you approach it, you have a better line of sight and able to see it. And, you know, for safety, maybe not everybody wants the speed, but they don't realize how fast they're going. This will give them more vision of be able to slow down for students. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, George. Yes, sir.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Couple of months ago, I came to the city council about the A couple of months ago, I came to the City Council about the lack of handicapped or special-needs children accessories in a park. So we went out and we found a company who was willing to come in and work with the city and make some of our parks, we have 12 parks, and I have a special-needs grandchild that I can't take him to any of the parks in the city because the rides, the equipment is either too old, not too big, so it's, there's hundreds and hundreds of children who can't go to a park like we all can. So we found this company that was going to come in and work with the city to provide some handicapped or special-needs equipment. So my daughter met with the representative from the company over at Holland Park and said, oh, this is great. I would love to do this, because the fact that the fellow who represents the company lives in Palm Coast, so this is a win-win situation. So we get a couple of brochures and magazines and a business card, and I turn it over to the Director of Parks and Recreation, he meets with them, and you know what the end result was? I'm sorry, we don't have enough money in the budget to supply any new equipment. But yet, we can spend and lose hundreds of thousands of dollars minimum at the Green Lion, and then on top of that, we tear down the old community center, we build up a new one, but you know what? If you want to use it, it's going to cost you a couple of hundred dollars to use something that you paying for in your taxes, but that's okay. Then, on top of that, we decide that we're going to build a tennis center next door. Well, probably there's not too many people sitting in this room tonight that play tennis or pickleball, but we spend four or five million dollars on that. Finally, we decide that we're going to recreate the splash park in Holland Park. So we lose a couple of million dollars, we sue the company, and the attorneys for the city said, a lawsuit wouldn't be a good idea because we don't have a good shot at winning. So we said, ah, okay, don't worry about the couple of millions of dollars we lose. Now, on top of that, this city just goes out and hires a contract, spends $5 million to put a splash park in park, but the problem is, you can't use it all year. So it's just, nobody can explain to me how we have all this money, we can piss away on all these other projects, but we can't do anything for kids with special needs. Shame on you.
For your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening. Jeremy, P section. Missed you guys, so I figured I'd come see you in person. I definitely support a forensic audit, that's for sure. Definitely want to see how we're spending our money, because what I heard on YouTube while I was watching the meetings, I find it very strange, it doesn't make sense. And I'm quite frankly tired of people coming and asking me to help them, help them with their homes. You're getting emails, aren't you? You are. It's unfortunate that people are coming to me to help because y'all can't do nothing. That's sad. You're a mayor, you're running for, you're running for mayor, I hope you lose. It's horse crap. See, I corrected myself, I didn't use the S-word, you're welcome. But this is ridiculous. I shouldn't have citizens come in to me to ask me to help them, but I know why, because I will come up here and let y'all know exactly how I feel, and y'all know I will. Y'all know I'll email you and everything. It's horrendous what y'all are doing to this city. You just want to keep building, like I said from the very, very, very beginning. I know what you're doing, I know who you're partnered with, I know where your money comes from. We're not dumb like you think we are. I see you eye-rolling, I hear all your sighs. I'm not stupid, none of these people are. But you can keep on ignoring it, because we're not going to let you. If you somehow get in, I would definitely like a forensic audit on that, that'd be amazing. Because I am tired of all of you candidates, I'm not pointing to him, he hasn't done anything, but the name-calling that y'all are doing behind, shaming people, that shit's got to stop. Sorry for the S-word, but that's terrible. Nobody running for office should have to be called a racist, and I know for darn well no one said that, called anybody a cat nigger, I know that. I grew up in the South, and I find that very hard, that somebody would ever say that, because it makes no damn sense. It's an oxymoron. But one of y'all are behind that, and it's terrible that y'all have to do that to gain any public gain, to try to win office. Enough of this.
Are there any additional members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and let me start with Lauren. Just a second. Would you just address the sandbag issue, because that's an emergency issue, please?
Sure, we did post it on our website and on social media about the sandbag location. We had a self-serve location at Public Works. Our emergency manager, Mr. Lord, encouraged all the municipalities to support private businesses and utilize those services first, but we did stand up a small sandbag location and posted it on various outlets.
And just with reference to a meeting, there was comment about a meeting, I'm not familiar with.
The emergency management meeting?
Yeah.
The emergency manager hosted internal meetings every day to give a situational brief, so we were a part of those meetings.
Very good. Let me open up to City Council members.
One thing, Lauren, I just want to confirm. Next month, a workshop, we are beginning the forensic audit path, correct?
Yes, sir. There will be a presentation by the consultant that you selected, MSL, on September 10th.
Okay, and they will go through the whole procedure and the cost involved, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's next month, what date, the workshop, right?
September 10th, yes.
Okay, great, I wanted to get that out of the way. Somebody mentioned the beach tax. That was a county thing that now has gone away. The county floated that idea, and they were talking about leveling a tax on all of us, spreading it out further away you live, the less you would pay. I think they've dropped that idea completely, if I'm not correct on that. So fortunately, that's not happening right now. The muffler thing, I find that interesting because I hear that noise, somebody got one of these cars near me, and it drives by in the middle of the night. I wanted to ask our attorney, do you know Florida law on this? Is there some tools in the toolbox for our sheriff?
If I may, there is a noise ordinance, correct?
Well, I understand there's a noise ordinance in our city.
Yeah.
But for our sheriff, though, are there other tools? I'm curious about. Either one.
Sure, I can help answer that. According to our code, we do have a section where it says the use of any motor vehicle without a muffler or operation which causes loud or ruckus noise. So if the gentleman or anybody who has those concerns could fill out a comment card with the information of whenever that's happening, so that we can follow up, not only with code enforcement, but also with our sheriff's office partners.
And I guess my question is, if that happens and you grab a license plate, I assume you can call the sheriff's department and say, this car, no muffler, just flew by me, here's a license plate. I don't know if you've done that or not, sir, but I'm...
He could introduce, maybe Commander Finn could introduce himself to the resident so that you could go through the process of procedure.
Yeah, great, great, because I know your pain and frustration on this, and those things are very noisy, very noisy. On the Flagler Humane Society, I know the county had a meeting where they discussed the concerns and the issues on this. I believe the county has budgeted about $300,000 this year. I'm not sure where we're at on that. Do you know, Lauren, offhand?
We've spent $67,000 thus far this year.
It would, I...
If I may, just so it's clear, that's a contractual agreement that we pay a fee for a service, is that correct?
That is correct.
They're a nonprofit.
We have no other relationship, other than they're a vendor, I guess.
They're a nonprofit, I've been out there, it's very, very crowded, they're not great conditions. I'm a big animal lover, all of my pets are rescued, and we didn't rescue them, they rescued us, and I always tell people, your best friend is waiting for you in a shelter, seriously. And that's where all our pets came from. But I do think it's time we start working with the county, and we start looking at coming up with some sort of joint county-city alternative.
If I may suggest, we actually have a joint city-county working group, it's actually scheduled, that might be a wonderful agenda item, because it's coming up fairly soon, because it's going to require not just the county and the city, but probably the other municipalities as well. Might be a great place to raise that.
Yes, and so I think that's something we need to do, we definitely, definitely need to do it. And on the splash pad, we are still suing, we are still involved in legal litigation. There are, what, four parties that we're going after? So we have not just abandoned those lawsuits, we are going after that and trying to recruit that money. We have a lot of meetings that you're not able to attend on this because of the nature of them, but rest assured, we're working to get that money back, and I hope we're successful. That's all I wanted to address.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. Next, Councilman Clufus, and then Councilwoman Potieri, I'll save you for the finale.
I just wanted to thank both groups from the short-term rental ordinance perspective, but then also the Flagler Humane Society, the unified voice that you guys come forward with, it makes a big difference, and we're going to follow up on these things. And I might be reaching out to some of the Flagler Humane individuals who are here tonight to get some more info, but I appreciate you coming in numbers and being persistent, because that's how you do make change, so thank you very much. And I do look forward for keeping the STR ordinances on the forefront of our, you know, our minds here, so thank you guys for being here tonight.
Okay, and Councilwoman Potieri, would you like to comment on any of the public comments this evening?
Just quickly, Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the, I want to echo, actually, what Councilman Clufus said regarding these groups that are coming out, and not only coming out united, but also being respectful, and just really working in conjunction with our staff to get things done. Regarding the Humane Society, I agree with Vice Mayor, I do think that this is something that needs to be addressed, and I agree with you, Mayor, that it should be addressed at the September, well, tentatively set September 20th joint meeting. That being said, we have not confirmed that that meeting is set in stone, because we are dealing with a lot of different schedules, obviously, so I would ask that we work with the county to get maybe our own meeting scheduled to discuss the Humane Society, have a workshop. I know at an hour and 52 minutes in yesterday, the BOCC did agree on a workshop regarding the Humane Society and floating some alternatives, or just discussing how they're going to move forward with the Humane Society. So, you know, I think that it would be appropriate for the multi-municipality meeting, but being that we don't know if that will in fact go forward on the 20th, I just think that maybe we should act proactively on this and work with the county directly to see if we can get a workshop scheduled. So I leave that to staff to try to figure out. And then the last thing I do want to bring up is the STR issue. If we can get it on an earlier agenda, I would like to do so. And on that, you know, I know that usually we have only one workshop a month when we're not doing budget workshops. I don't know about you guys, but these marathon workshops that are seven and eight hours long are just brutal, and I feel like we all need to be on, you know, the top of our game during these workshops, there's so much important stuff that's discussed. So I would advocate to keep two workshops a month all year round, rather than only during the budget cycle. And then perhaps things like the STR discussion can be moved up, even outside of the budget cycle workshops when we're doing two a month. So I guess it's kind of a two-fold request, asking staff if we can move the STR workshop up in any manner, in any way on our agenda, and then asking council what your thoughts are about keeping two workshops a month, so that we can cut down on kind of these marathon workshops, rather than going back to one workshop a month after the budget cycle is done.
So Councilwoman, just for clarification, City Manager, the date for the STR workshop agenda item is what?
We're targeting September 10th.
So that's what, less than a month?
Yes.
So is it even, I mean, is it...
Well, it's a little over a month, Mayor.
So, I mean, can you move it up, or, I mean, let me ask it differently. Are we waiting for any legal opinion or work to be productive at that meeting? Either one.
So there has been a draft created, and now we are working on making sure that draft is ready for, to have input from you guys. I don't think it's there yet, because we don't want to rush it, I want to make sure it's in a good enough form for you all to review and get feedback.
Okay, so let me help you with that. So do I have consensus on the dais that we would move that meeting date up, provided that Legal can give you ample time to review the work they've done? City Manager?
Can I just help you there?
Yep.
Because obviously, we're working through the agenda now for your next workshop, and we won't have enough time to do it for next Tuesday.
Right.
Your second business meeting was postponed due to the election, so we have a business meeting on the 27th, and it's lengthy. So if you would like to add this item to that lengthy agenda, we can, but that's why we've kind of settled on the September 10th.
I'm open to your opinions, what do you want to do? It's a long one.
I want to make sure we get it right. We've waited too long to do this, and if you need extra time and we have to wait an extra couple of weeks, I think this is so important that we don't rush it through and get it wrong. And I understand, I've talked to a lot of folks from the Coalition, in the C-section, and other parts of town, too, and I understand the frustration, I just want us to do it right.
And if I could just add to that, and Councilwoman Potieri, just a note here, would you all be willing to maintain that date if we were also able to invite and get a confirmation that Al Hadid from the county, who actually was the inspiration for the county's original short-term vacation rental legislation, could join us?
It's fine with me if we make it.
Is there any reason why we can't do it on August 3rd, or I'm sorry, September 3rd? That would be the first workshop in September. I know it's only a...
Hold on, attorney's going to make comments, so go ahead. August 3rd, yes?
September 3rd is a business meeting? Would you like to have it on that? So it would come straight to business, it would be in this setting that we would do it, and not a workshop? That's totally your preference.
That's a consensus. Councilwoman Potieri, you're good, Dan?
As long as we have, as long as Legal's good and we have it.
So I'll leave each council member responsible to contact Legal if they should need to have the discussion. Councilman Clufus, I think that the public has indicated that they would like us to expedite the discussion, so I think we have consensus here. So City Manager, if you would, please apply that to that agenda.
Absolutely, Mayor.
Good, thank you. Any other comments? Very good. So with that, we'll move...
Mayor, I'm sorry, I know I kind of double-teamed the request, but I would like to have that discussion regarding the workshops, just so that we cut down on the length of the workshops by keeping two rather than one. And I don't expect a response from everybody now, I know this is kind of something that, you know, I would like my colleagues to be able to think about, it is, I think, a pretty significant step moving forward, but just kind of maybe put in the back of everybody's minds, I'm looking at the agendas for the future workshops coming up that are a part of our agenda tonight, and some of those workshops are just really lengthy, and I know the ones that we've been through lately, specifically because of the comp plan, have also been lengthy. But I don't find that the comp plan or the budget have really been unique in the length of the workshops. I think all year, they've just been really long. I mean, we're a growing city, I think we're really dynamic, we're going through a lot of change, and so I think we're going to continue to see a lot of items on the workshop agendas. So I would just advocate that we have two a month rather than one, once we go down to not having the budget workshops. But again, I don't expect a response from my colleagues now.
No, and if I may, I would just add one more comment to yours, because I've heard it brought up several times. Is this also something that y'all would prefer that the newly seated council would consider as they would be the ones that would be most affected by it going forward? Just for thought, thought for consideration. So what you're suggesting is we bring it back at the next meeting, discuss it again?
Sure, I think that's fair.
Okay, and I would, just so you know my position, I would absolutely, I think we need more time, and I would, Vice Mayor, you're moving on, so I think we need the extra time.
I have to beat Mr. Clufus to this joke, I think we should have a workshop on whether or not, I could read your mind.
But I pulled up trouble.
Don't go there.
Think it's not a bad idea, once we get through this budget thing.
I think, I think we need, I think we need the extra time.
And maybe it's our parting gift to the new council, since three of us won't be here, maybe that's our parting gift to them, which will actually make their lives easier. So it's not a bad suggestion at all.
Okay, well, I'll work on your, I'll work on your arithmetic, but that's okay, I'll work on your arithmetic. Okay, with that, we'll move forward, and looking for the, looking at the minutes of the City Council meeting on July 16, 2024, business meeting, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second from Councilman Clufus, are there, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead with a voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Similarly, for the city council workshop meeting held on July the 23rd, 2024, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Clufus has made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any, thank you. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Letter F, Item Number Two, which is ordinances of the second read. And Mr. Fang, it's, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Fang Wang, Senior Planner. This is the voluntary annexation of BJ's Wholesale Club and Seminole Woods Investment. This is the second reading of the ordinance. Since the first ordinance until now, there are no changes at all. I still have the previous PowerPoint if you would like me to go through that. If not, it's recommended to be adopted.
Okay. Questions or concerns for discussion at this time?
I don't need a refresher on it.
You're good?
I'm good.
Councilman Clufus?
Second time we're seeing it, this is fine by me.
Councilwoman Pontieri?
I'm good as is, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I will make a comment for the record that I think that the city manager and the county administrator must continue their efforts to discuss a traffic flow in that immediate area. And they should also reach out to the Transportation Planning Organization and identify the fact that we are aware that this is a congested area and needs a solution. So I am okay with this, but I need that to be an ongoing discussion, not to be forgotten because of an annexation.
Understood, Mayor.
Thank you. Then I would open up this item for public discussion at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close this item for discussion, come back to the dais. Any final discussion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the ordinance as read, but hold on a second, forgive me. I'm going to ask the attorney to please read that in more officially than I did before.
Ordinance 2024-XX, voluntary annexation of approximately 31.680 acres of property owned by BJ's Wholesale Club Incorporated and Seminole Woods Investment LLC.
Thank you, Counselor, I do appreciate that. So I do have a motion from the Vice Mayor. May I have a second? A second from Councilman Clufus. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Pontieri, any final discussion?
No, Mayor.
Then with that, I would, I would ask for a voice vote. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you. We'll move further down the agenda now, and we'll move to Letter G, which is Resolutions and Number Three. And I would ask council to go ahead and read that into the record for me if you would be so kind.
And thank you for sticking around.
Resolution 2024-XX, Live Like Cameron Annual Promotion of Childhood Cancer Awareness.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jacqueline Gonzalez. I'm with the Planning Department, and I'm here to discuss with you today about a resolution.
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
This is Live Like Cameron.
Nah, it's not, I'm so sorry.
Councilwoman, did you have a comment?
He was saying the wrong slide deck.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, no worries. Unless you guys want to take the CBGG grants as well, then maybe.
Okay, banners on the parkway, I apologize.
There we go. And we're read and correcting the record, we're good?
Yes, we are.
Very good. All right, please proceed.
Okay, I'd like to give you guys a little bit of a background. Banners on the parkway were always approved by resolution. Starting in 2007, we entered into an agreement with FPNL to allow us to use the banners on the parkway on Palm Coast Parkway and Bellteer Parkway. Since then, we have partnered with other nonprofit agencies as well as our own to have banners on the parkway. Some of those banners have been approved by Florida Home Builders Association, Radiology for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and this year, Live Like Cameron is proposing to put banners on the parkway for September. Live Like Cameron is an organization in memory of Cameron Fulling. He actually passed away in 2017 from cancer, and this is an honor to Remember Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Palm Coast. We currently have a resolution that proclaims September as the Cancer, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Therefore, by honoring them and allowing them to put the banners on the parkway, we will fulfill that proclamation that we've made. Currently, these are the banners they're proposing to put on the parkway. I do not know why they're not showing on the screen. But we're currently putting banners on, they have proposed banners for the parkway.
Here we go.
Sorry, for some reason, it wasn't moving.
That's all right.
Banners on the parkway for Live Like Cameron. This is Cameron Fulling, like I said. He passed away in 2017. This is a charity to honor him, but they also help the community by providing positive consensus in memory of families who have children with childhood cancer. As I was explaining, this is the childhood cancer banner at this time that they're proposing to rise on the parkway to encourage families with cancer or children with cancer and making this Cancer Awareness Month obvious in September. At this time, the applicant is here and they would like to make a presentation.
Of course.
Like to speak.
Any, please, I just have a question before they begin. Just so I'm clear, we have a proclamation that will support this initiative as well, correct?
Correct.
Very good. So please introduce yourself and welcome.
Hi, my name's Melissa Fulling. I'm the founder of Live Like Cameron. As she said, we are a local nonprofit that supports our children with cancer. And I have with me a few of our cancer fighters. This over here is Jessie, and we have Essie.
Welcome.
We have Matthew. They're representing for our other children that couldn't be here. I believe all three of these kids have been fighting 10-plus years. So we are here for them, all our other children that are fighting, the kids that have passed away. We would love nothing more than to have them drive by on Palm Coast Parkway and see that this community cares about them.
Very good.
So we're hoping you would...
Okay, would they like to just make a comment on how much they think these banners might help? I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I personally think it's a wonderful idea. And if it brings more awareness, and I'm assuming that it's awareness that you would like to achieve so that more people would know about the struggle that is going on, I think that maybe then more people could help.
Absolutely. I'm not sure, they're all a little shy, so I don't know.
Yes, of course. I, listen, I think I can speak for my colleagues. We, of course, respect the struggle and the well-fought fight that they have gone through and continue to do, so we have nothing but respect. And you do not have to say anything. I will not force you to do that.
Actually, Essie said she will.
Well, wonderful, good.
I just think that, I don't know if most of you guys know, but we only get 4% research from the state. Well, I think, what is it? Government-funded, less than 4%. So I think this is just something small, but it can go a long way. So I believe that we're worth more, worth more than 4%. So just a little something recognized. We have 37, 37 kids in Flory County that have childhood cancer. So just Palm Coast Parkway, kind of one of the main streets, show awareness. So anything helps.
Good. So let's hope that a demonstration of additional awareness could increase the investment and the research and all of the things that you're hoping it will achieve. So that's very, very good. Okay. Would you like to get a picture?
Sure, yeah, we'd love to.
Sure.
I'd also like to say I'm proud to have known Matthew for over eight years now. So it's great to see you here and keep kicking butt and taking names. I met Matthew and his father, George, over eight years ago now, back when I was campaigning in 2016. So love seeing you guys here.
Do you want to, would the kids like to, please? Yes, of course.
I just want to make it known also, I tried to do this about five years ago. So we've been fighting for about five years to get this recognized. So if you could, Essie is my daughter. So whatever we can do as a community to get this pushed forward faster, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Why don't you bring everybody forward and maybe we get a picture? Because a picture's worth a thousand words and maybe we can get it out there.
Okay.
You don't want the boss in there?
Hold on, hold on.
Let's get...
One more time. I'll take it.
Me?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Come on, get up here.
Come on, Dan.
If you want to accelerate the process, this is how you do it.
Dan says he's good back there.
And he's got the right shirt on. Very good. Staff, give him a hand. Of course. I'll tell you what you do. Give it to the clerk and she'll pass them out. Give it to me real quick, this one. So just to finish off the presentation, there will be a, why don't you come right here? Help me out with this. Give me the words. There will be a 5K, which goes, the proceeds will go to, directly to the families. And when will it be given? When is the 5K?
The 22nd of September.
So September the 22nd.
At Town Center.
At Town Center right here. And what time will it begin?
It begins at 8:00 AM.
And I can guarantee you, Mr. Clufus will be there ready to run.
Front row, right there.
Very good. All right, thank you. Very good. Oh, just have a seat for a minute.
Heavy foreshadow.
Let me come back to the presentation. Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
What is it that you would ask of city council at this time?
Ask city council to adopt the resolution allowing Live Like Cameron organization to use the street poles to promote the Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay, so just before I would get there, I think I would open this up for public comment. I think we've had some public comment already. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, ma'am. Celia, come on up.
Yes, yes.
Run up, 5K, come on, get ready.
Pull a helmet.
Well, at 8:01 almost.
All right. It's not the record, but keep coming.
All right, yes, no, yes, this, we need those. Yes, should be a big yes from the community, and I hope the best for all those children.
Yes, of course. Thank you, Celia. Okay, with that, we'll come back to, any other public comment? Then I'll close public comment, I'll come back to the dais.
I'll make a motion, too.
So the Vice Mayor will make the motion to approve the ordinance.
Resolution.
I'm sorry, the resolution as, as written. Counselor, am I good with that? Very good. And I'm, I'm looking for a second from a virtual participant, no. I can't do that, I'm sorry. Is there a second? I have a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion?
I just, just really quickly, Mayor. I just want to commend all the children and their parents that are battling cancer. My goddaughter actually just got her port from her leukemia removed yesterday. It was a four-year battle. She was diagnosed when she was three and a half. So I saw firsthand, very close and personal, what cancer does to kids and their families. So thank you for your bravery and your strength and just your absolute resiliency because it cannot be explained until you see it and you feel it and you live it. And I just commend all of you for just the strength that you exhibit going through that. And I'm very proud of our city for doing this.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for the second. So with that, and if there's no further discussion, I would ask all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
You have your answer, it's approved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move to item number, the next deck. So number four, and Counselor, if you would read that in for me.
Resolution 2024-XX, approval of the Community Development Block Grant, Federal Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Okay, Jose, not, not quite as exciting, but every bit as important.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Jose Pampa for the Community Development Department. This is something that we do annually regarding the allocation that we receive from the federal government for, through the Community Development Block Grant Program. So this particular action plan, which you adopt annually, is for funds that will be used in the upcoming fiscal year, '24, '25. So again, this is a document that's required by the program. And essentially, this document, the annual action plan, outlines how the city intends to use the funds received through the CDBG program. And as we previously go over annually, the CDBG program is established to benefit low and moderate income persons or area to prevent or eliminate summer blightiness or address urgent community development needs. And that's, that's the national objectives of the program. So again, we've used this program for various items, but mainly housing-related activities, public services. It is eligible for economic development, infrastructure improvement, and funds may be used for planning administration and monitoring of the program. So what the intent, and as recommended by your Citizens Advisory Task Force, is that the funds continue to be used for activities that we've conducted in the past. And that would be for the housing rehabilitation activities and including its monitoring, the first-time homebuyers program, allocating the maximum allowable amount for public service activities, and that would be through the mini-grant program for our nonprofits, and the summer camp program. And the balance of the funds will go to the general administration to ensure compliance of our CDBG program with the rules established by HUD. And so for fiscal year '24, '25, there is $480,948 allotted by HUD to the city as approved by the Citizens Advisory Task Force. $323,000 of that will go for financial assistance for home repair, single-family residential units, to the first-time homebuyers program, $50,000. And the maximum allotted for public service activities, which is $72,142, broken down into $57,142 for public service and $15,000 for the summer camp program. That $15,000 for the summer camp program, because there are some unused funds from previous years dedicated for summer camp, it will bring their total to about $45,000. That's, that would be available for next year, next summer, summer of '25, summer camp program. And the balance would be for planning administration. That's to qualify participants in the program, to pay for staff time for, as we work on the CDBG program. And so again, the CATF held a public hearing on June 13th and recommended approval of the action plan. We've had the plan posted on the website for 30 days. We've received no comments. We're here at a public hearing and approved tonight. That will give us the time needed to submit this document by August 15th to HUD. And I'll be happy to take...
Just quickly, the, are we turning any children away that desire scholarships that we are not able to offer?
I don't know the answer to that question of, because I'm not involved with intake and with the summer camp program.
Mayor, James might be able to provide some insight based off summer camp registrations this year.
Not that I'm aware of. We haven't turned anyone away.
Not that I'm aware of. We haven't turned anyone away. I think we have about $13,000 left over for, from, from this year. So we, yeah, we.
So we're not aware of, of leaving anybody behind. Good. Leave no children, leave no child behind.
Yep.
Good. I appreciate knowing that. And Jose, just help me with this. The, this is, this is out there, but this program is likely or not likely to find its way into the, under the umbrella of the live local legislation in the future. It's just a question. You think they'll always, your feeling is they'll remain separate?
Let me just put it this way. Despite what the main activities that we do with the Community Development Block Grant Program, it is not a housing program.
No, right, okay.
The Community Development Program.
So it doesn't really belong there. I'm, I'm just worried about when Tallahassee gets busy, they start to round up stuff like this and kind of squeeze it into a ball that we have a very difficult time unraveling. So you don't feel that that's a, because the other is too much, this is dedicated too much to the, it's dedicated too much to the housing side?
Because that's the easiest, well, it's not the easiest, but it's where the need is in our community.
Right.
We can do infrastructure projects, but again, finding those infrastructure projects that would benefit a qualified area is, is some of the difficulty that we have.
Right.
We have no, we don't have an abundance of census tracts that are low, moderate income in that.
Yeah, I just have to put a shout out now with regard to volunteers that serve on these committees, because I used to chair this committee. Are you able to get a sufficient number of volunteers to participate in these committees? Or is it a struggle?
Oh, the, the CATF?
Yeah.
No, we, we don't have any issues for that.
No problem.
No issues. So we don't have to make a call out for additional. Very good. Good for you. Good job. Very good. Then any questions from city council members about this right now?
None.
All right, then let me open it up to the public. If there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item at this time. Celia, come on up.
Celia Puglisi, here in Palm Coast, '91. Due to my ignorance and the last line that Mr. Papa mentioned there, says $35,000 for administration. What is that for, actually?
Okay, fair question. And, okay.
Because, you know, I think that if it's the use.
Let's let, let's let, let's let him answer.
To pay the work of employees. The employees already getting paid.
So let's let him answer the question. Go ahead.
It, it does go for a portion of, the, the time that we put in, in administering this program. You know, it, it comes out of the, the CDBG budget. Just those hours.
I don't know. We pay employees in the city very good salaries for. And I think that why do we have to come up with grand money that is supposed to benefit the community paying additional to city?
Okay, fair question. And Jose, let me, from my past experience, it seems to me it's a legal requirement, isn't it?
It's, it's not a legal requirement.
Now, okay.
I believe it was, if, if my, if I may so boldly speak, it was an administrative decision at the time that the hours that we spent on grants come out of the grant itself because it was permitted by that grant that we recover the cost of us. Without the CDBG program, yes, our salaries would be paid full-time from, I guess, ad valorem at that point.
But you're not getting double paid.
No, no, we're not getting double.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to follow, I'm trying to follow the thought. Where else would the funds come from?
If we didn't have a CDBG program, then it would come from the, the typical bucket that you pull our salaries from.
Right. Planning dollars are supported by the general fund.
So it's coming from someplace.
Taxes, property taxes.
Okay. Um, okay. Any other comments from the public? All right, so we'll come back to the dais. Council members, any final comments on this item? Hearing none, I would ask, what, what is it you'd like us to do?
Approve the annual action plan for fiscal year 2024 funds.
Very good. So the language is there. I would ask for.
Make a motion for approval.
I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the resolution as, as described in the presentation. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Councilman Clufus has seconded. Is there any final discussion regarding the item? Hearing none, I would ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, Jose. Thank you both.
Thank you.
With that, we move forward to, are we on item number six, I believe now? No, we're on number five. So if you would read that in. I see you haven't moved, so this must be the.
Resolution 2024-XX Community Development Block Grant Housing Assistant Plan.
Once again, good evening, Mayor, city council members. I'm Jacqueline Gonzalez in the planning department. I'm here to discuss the updates we did to the annual housing assistance plan. It is required by HUD that we actually review every three to five years our local housing plan, see if there's any changes or improvements that we need to make to it. We originally received money in 2014 to administer the CDBG grant. And at that time, we also adopted our housing plan to govern those HUD grant funds. Currently, there were four things that we made updates to. One was to increase the maximum award amount for participants in the program to match what currently ship program funds awards are. We wanted to update the change order process. We needed to update relocation and displacement process, as well as the appeals and complaints secession order process. So those were the changes that we made to the plan. Increase in the maximum award. Over the last five years, square footages and costs, I did an estimate. County currently does $80,000 per home. We only do $50,000 per home. But we're finding that the increase in costs to rehab homes have increased. And therefore, we're having to come before council more for change orders to exceed that $50,000 limit. So right now, we're wanting to increase the maximum award amount to $80,000 to match what current ship funds are being allocated for this program. Second, we have change orders that come in with this process. Some of the change orders are building code deficiencies, which require those limits, which also affect the maximum award amount. Most of the time, when a house is bid, we get the bid in, it's already exceeding $50,000. We have to automatically do a change order to that award. Our current change order status only permits you to do two. But once we start a change order, we haven't even started the house, we need to make sure that we're able to continue. So we wanted to increase that and put no limit on change orders, in order so we won't be able to penalize or already start in the hole when we start making changes to the house. We find the scope of works are becoming more and more. So if you do an inspection, you're having to find that, that inspection, the report comes back and you're adding an additional $25,000 to that house. And we just did a change order to reduce the cost to meet the 50. Also, displacement and relocation was something that we were kind of lacking in our L-HAP. We had no time limits. We didn't have an approval process, how to request extensions, or even how to terminate a contract if those relocation allocations or displacement process did not work out for the applicant. So we wanted to improve that. So we went with our local attorney at the time and they reviewed this to make sure that everything was okay. Also, at this point, we needed to follow our current appeals process. There, it went straight from actually to city manager, city council, and the HUD. We've added more steps in that to try to negotiate and be able to help the applicant instead of exhausting all their avenues upfront. So at this time, all we're asking is that you approve the changes that were made to the L-HAP.
Okay, thank you. Just a question. And this might indirectly address the, the speaker's comment before. Does any of this, will any of this find its way towards a housing partnership program that affects the entire community? Or will these programs always stay intact? I know we've been talking about a, a kind of a more robust housing partnership of which these could be elements of. Is that something that's ever been discussed? Only because the, the magnitude of the number is small. I mean, how many, how many residents or how many homes do, are, do we affect in a, in a year, in a cycle?
On an average, we do anywhere between 10 to 15 homes per year.
10 to 15 homes per year in a rapidly growing community which has a population in excess of 100,000. I may not be fair in my, in my evaluation, but I'm looking for a bigger initiative, which would be under the guise of a, not guise, under a description of a, of a, a formal housing partnership. Is that something that these groups have discussed or not aware of that? Or Jose, tell me. If I'm off base, let me know.
I think Jackie can explain it better, but you know, we work in partnership with the ship program.
Yes.
Flagler County on, on applicants and the amount of funds that we have. You're right, $300, something thousand that we have available for, for housing rehab. With the cost of construction, it, it doesn't, it's going a lot less than it used to.
Yeah.
But we do have partners with, through the county and the ship program that if we don't have the funds, we're able to send them to contact Flagler County and hopefully they can get assistance through that program.
Okay, so we're collaborating with the county to make it bigger. Okay.
Yes, sir. And, and again, the, you know, the, the increase in cost is just due to the nature of what.
Everything, yeah.
The cost is these days. That means we're going to be able to do less homes. But it, it is particular that, to, to the ship program itself that that increased. And again, we're just trying to match what Flagler County is doing through the ship program.
Yeah.
So that, you know, if we have a participant who might have to cross and, and participate in both programs, we sort of have a better understanding of what kind of assistance we can, we can provide them. Because the one thing about the CDBG is that if we start rehab on a home and we realize, and, and through the inspection, there's a mold issue, we cannot just walk away from a mold issue. We have to cure it. It might have started off that an applicant comes in just with, I need new, a new roof. Okay, that's fine. But we do the inspection. Well, you know what? That new roof, or, or that roof that you had that was leaky, it was leaking behind the walls. And now your cabinets are compromised. They're going to fall off the wall. We cannot walk away. So those are real-life examples of what.
It could easily consume all of your funding just with that.
Yes.
And the one thing that we all know for sure is that the need will only get bigger as we go forward. It's certainly never going to get smaller.
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good. Any comments?
I have no comments.
Yeah.
I'd just say, thank you for working through this process and trying to streamline it and seeing where there's impediments and get those out of the way so that we can help the people who need help.
Sure.
Very good. Any other comments from city council members?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The, the change that we made regarding the change orders, is there something that we can do to maybe, rather than saying we're removing the limit on change orders submitted, that we put some type of limit on the amount above the original contract price? I, I only say this because I, I don't want there to be abuse of, you know, winning a bid and then raising the price. And because we've now removed this limit on change orders, we're kind of giving carte blanche ability for contractors to raise a, a contract price on us after we already agreed to something. So I'm just, I'm looking for some type of safeguard there.
Actually, we added penalties to contractors violating the process so that way that they could not do, we've had that happen. And so we've made changes that contractors could not violate the process during change orders. They have to have a qualified standard in order for them to make a change order. It has to be a HUD-qualified standard for rehabilitation that is supported by the evidence of an inspection or a report from a contractor or a specialist who says that that work needs to be changed.
Got it. Okay, I appreciate that. And then in the contract itself, I guess my kind of general question first is, for the Community Development Block Grant Housing Assistance Plan for City of Palm Coast, is this kind of a standard plan? Or is this something that is a little bit more customizable for our city? And I'll, I'll tell you the two reasons that I really ask is, one, are we basing the, the, the need of a family or of a household mostly on income? Or are there other things that we're looking at? And, and let me just kind of explain why I ask. I think that there's a lost middle class that could get skipped for funding like this because the, the, the parents in the household or a single parent in a household may be carrying two or three jobs. And so their income level doesn't quite meet the, the income level that's required for this type of assistance, but they're busting their hump out there. And, you know, they've got kids that, who they're missing their baseball games or their soccer games or their, you know, their school plays because they're working two and three jobs. And, but then because they're working those two and three jobs and they're making a certain income, they don't qualify for this type of program. So I guess I'm, I'm curious as to what we weigh. Because I see what we look at, but how do we weigh those when we're determining who is entitled to this type of relief?
So there is no weighing. The income is the, the threshold that has to be met in order to qualify for the program. And those are not our rules. Those are the federal regulations that govern the Community Development Block Grant. No more than 80% of the area median income is the threshold. And of course, that varies depending on family size. And under our process, it's a whoever completes their application, whoever qualifies first goes to the head of the line. So there is no weighing that of, I, I appreciate what you're asking, Council, Councilwoman, but it is, we, those are the rules passed down to us through, by HUD.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Mr. Papa. That was kind of my high-level question was how customizable is this plan? Or are we kind of bound by what the government has told us we have to do? Disappointing. I think that there should be, this should be looked at from a higher level, but obviously, we can't control that. So my only other question was, on page 14 of the plan, it talks about the income that's, that is evaluated. Do you know, do we look at just the household income? Or if there are joint title holders to a property, do we look at the income for those, for all of the title holders as well?
Under the income qualification regulations required by HUD, we have to look at all the income of the joint title holders as well.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you. I don't think I've been out to public comment yet. So if there, was that, if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item at this time, seeing no one come forward, I'll come back to the dais. Any final comments on the program itself?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion, Vice Mayor's made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Councilman Clufus has made a motion to second. Any further discussion? Then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentations. With that, I would move to item number six. And Counselor, if you would read that in for us, please.
Resolution 2024-XX Approving the Retreat at Town Center Phase Two Final Plat Application Number 5747.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Estelle Lenz, planner with the city. This is the final plat, this agenda item is the final plat for the retreat at Town Center Phase Two. I, I was just going to mention that it's, this plat is creating 61, yes, I'm sorry, 61 single-family residential lots. This is the final stage of the plating process, so I can go through a presentation if you like. What I can let you know is the infrastructure is completed on this already. And this is just basically a request to approve the, the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the plat, the final deal step.
Thank you. I would just ask city council members, does anyone need a review at this point in time?
I don't.
Councilwoman, are you, are you clear on the information presented?
I am. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And Councilman Clufus?
Yep, this is just the plat. This is final step.
So we don't require a presentation. Are there any questions? No. So then I would open up for the public, if there are any members of the public. That, yes, Celia, come on up. on up.
Celia Puglisi, here since 91. Driving from my house here, I take, I believe it's the Town Center Boulevard, coming off Alkins Road, in front of the Imagine School, already the pavement is being badly repaired, because the car went boom, 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 right? And it's going to get worse. So, all this housing needs to be really assessed about the infrastructure road that is going to increase usage. It's good that we have this housing in Town Center. I don't, I think it's fine. But is the developer, or is the city having the developer address the infrastructure road, at least? Because it's already eroding by the schools, that section, and it's a pretty long section, it's going to go worse. So, also, I've been told before by our manager, a while ago, that those tables on Town Center, which are so good, the speed tables, rounds, that are made out of brick, we were told in a meeting with Mrs. Bibang and the current city manager, that they were going to be done away with. And I don't think that would be good, adding more housing around. So, we were told in a meeting that those beautiful speed tables, which I wish we will have somewhere else in the city, were going to be done away. So I hope they're not going to be done away, because we need road infrastructure for whatever, 61 more homes.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments for the public at this time? All right, I will come back to the dais. Any comments from the city manager?
I'm not sure where that reference came from.
Why don't you ask Celia to, ask her question to
Carl, if you can help Ms. Puglisi answer her question about the speed tables in Town Center.
Very good, okay. Then with that, I would
I'll make the motion.
Ask for a motion from, I have, yes?
This is a quasi-judicial matter, so you need to do ex parte communication.
So, okay, has anyone had any ex parte communication regarding this item? The Vice Mayor has not, I have not, Councilman Clufus has not, and I ask, Councilwoman Pontieri, any ex parte communication regarding this agenda item?
I have not, Mayor.
So we have not. Okay, thank you. All right, with that then, I have a, I do have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve the resolution.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Clufus. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we now move to the final resolution, number seven. And, Counselor, if you put that in for me.
Resolution 2024-XX, approving Seminole Palms Town Homes, Final Plat, Application Number 5738.
Good evening, Estelle Lenz, again. So this is the final plat for Seminole Palms Town Homes. This plat is creating 58 townhouse lots. It's part of the Seminole Palms MPD. The infrastructure is already under construction. This is the final step of the plating process. And again, I have a presentation I can go through, or we can just answer questions.
Again, I'll ask city council members, do you need a refresher, or any additional information?
Same.
Councilman, Councilwoman Pontieri, any details that you need re-presented?
No, Mayor.
Very good. Then, if there are no questions for the presenters, I would open this item up for the public. If there are any, yes, Celia. Take your time.
Celia, in Palm Coast, this is 91. This is called Seminole Palms Town Homes. It's located in Seminole Woods area, or is in Town Center? Where is located this? In Seminole Woods?
It's in Seminole Woods, it's off of Seminole Woods Boulevard.
It's located in Seminole Woods. Mayor, Seminole Woods is adjacent to the airport. Some areas of Seminole Woods are, the residents are very much affected. The county opened a, on X account, they opened to a portal, so the people in that area, Seminole Woods and Quail Hollow, that have serious issues with the noise of the airplanes going so low over their homes, can bring their complaints. They started that in July, and already they have 626 complaints. And this is going to increase. Now, these homes approved on Seminole Woods are on the paths of those aircrafts, if they are, have they considered any navigation easements for these homes? Because people is having to sell their homes right now at a loss, due to the nuisance of the schools' noise and danger, and dropping lead on that area. And it's very serious, Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Althing. So, they need to start thinking about navigation rights, because navigation rights on this area, adjacent to the airport, will warn people of buying those homes, and will protect the airport, and will protect the potential buyers. So, people is selling their homes to a loss now. And I have friends that are going through that right now. So, you need to take a serious issue and look at this, and read about navigation rights on properties, better say, navigation easements, excuse me, not rights, navigation easements. I think they are needed on these properties that are adjacent to the airport. Because we even have a serious problem. People is up in arms, because they were not told about the airport when they saw their houses, there was no noise, certain time of the day, and now they're having, that they cannot even sleep, because this thing is even late at night, the touch-and-gos from all these students from the flight schools. All right, that's all.
I thank you for your comment. Are there, yes, sir.
Mark Stansel, Seminole Woods. I'm just not clear on where those Palms Town Homes are supposed to be. That's not where the Cascades were supposed to be, is it?
Can you just qual, or qualify the location for us?
It's right off of Citation Extension, which of course, it's under construction right now. So it's a little bit north of the Grand Landings entrance.
Okay.
And it'll be right on the west side of Seminole Woods.
You're very welcome. If there are no other comments from the public at this time, I'll come back to the dais for any final questions or comments from city council members. Hearing none, I would ask
Go ahead and make a motion for approval.
The Vice Mayor has made a motion to approve quasi-judicial.
Yes, sir.
Have you had any, Vice Mayor, quasi-judicial ex parte?
None.
I have not, I have not. Councilwoman Pontieri, any ex parte communication regarding this agenda item?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. So, Counselor, we have not had any ex parte. So, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Clufus. Any further discussion? Then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Thank you, folks, for the presentations. We now move to the consent agenda. City council members, any comments on the consent agenda before we move forward?
I have none.
I do, Mayor. I just have a question on two. They would be items nine and 11. They are for master service agreements with multiple firms for professional engineering services. One of them is for traffic, the other is for stormwater. And I just wanted to inquire with staff as to the reason for needing these additional master service agreements, where there's really no amount stated as to how much the city can spend, when we have an in-house traffic engineer and an in-house stormwater engineer.
Thank you for your question. I've got Mr. Cody coming up to answer that for us. Thank you, Carl.
Yes, good evening, Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering Department. We, this is a, we have existing continuing service consultant contracts for various disciplines. We have many on the agenda tonight. The previous ones have expired, so the, this is a refresh to those. We use these consultants for certain limit-type projects. We're limited by the Consulting Committative Negotiation Act, Florida statute, regarding what they can do under this contract. The dollar amounts just got increased on July 1st, to seven and a half million for a construction project. So, if the value of the project's going to exceed that, you need to go project-specific for a consulting firm. The reason for continuing service contracts are so that we don't have to go out for every project. It's very time-consuming for staff, for procurement. You have to evaluate them, rank them. These are contracts in place for your typical everyday-type projects that you have, or your standard-type projects that aren't, require specialties or certain experience. If we do have those, even if they're under the threshold, we'll go out, project-specific. But these are here for projects that cannot, can be completed by in-house staff. We obviously look to pursue and complete work with in-house staff when possible, based on staff workload or staff experience and whatnot. You know, these would be utilized for projects. On the stormwater side, it would be like the PA1 wear replacement. There's multiple trades involved, structural engineers, we have electrical work tied to it, electrical engineering, you have some geotechnical work that has to be done. So usually, on a lot of these projects, it's multi-disciplined, you know, managing over 100 projects, you know, a year. We typically complete some in-house, but we spend a lot of time doing some studies, some modeling in-house. We identify projects. We do what we can with in-house staff, based on their availability. And so these are used more for other types of projects. I mentioned the wear could be the Colbert Lane, Colbert upsizing and replacement. That's a very large project. You got MOT involved to do one-lane roadways. So you have multiple, again, multiple disciplines, freshwater canal dredging, you get bathymetric surveys, something we can't do with in-house staff. So, you know, on the traffic side, a traffic engineer spends a lot of his time just managing our existing projects, looking at signals. Right now, that position is currently vacant, you know, so we don't have an engineer on board to do any of that. So we'd be using these consultants to help with those types of services. I hope that helps clarify things for you.
So it does somewhat. I appreciate that. I guess my follow-up question would be, aren't those projects that you're referring to, though, I mean, don't those estimates and the quotes that we receive entail the engineering piece of the project as well? I guess I'm still a little confused. I feel like we're, we may be doubling down on what we're paying for the same services in a couple of different ways, and I just want to make sure that that's not occurring.
No, lots of times, you know, there's multiple phases to a project. Sometimes it's, you know, a study, or there's modeling done. Other times, you know, there might be runaway acquisition. Then there's the design phase of the project. And when we go to construction, you know, we'll have a contractor, and we'll bring those services in, you know, that contract. But we may use a consultant to do the construction engineering inspection phase services, typically when we have grant projects, because there's really mandates by FDOT and other entities that require, can't be done by in-house staff. You have to use consultants for that particular type of work. So we'd be bringing both those contracts when we bring in construction contracts. So in our CIP, we do break down those different phases, and they're tied into the overall project cost, you know, whether it's any of those services throughout the project.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a question? Councilwoman, I appreciate the question to make sure that we're not doubling up on any of those costs. I guess Carl answered it completely. Okay, good. Anyone else? Okay, then I'll open it up for the public. Any members of the public? Yes, Celia, come on up.
Celia Puglisi, Palm Coast. I stay this late just to echo nine, nine, 10, and 11. I have the same questioning myself, because we do have employed professionals at six-figure salaries here in the city, architect, I believe, engineer, traffic engineers, engineers, professionals, even assistants of our chiefs of staffs, all professionals. We're paying six-figure salaries. And every time we residents see that, every time the city has to move a finger, they go to a consultant. The consultant is 100, 200,000, like in the case of the islands, traffic coming islands that Mrs. Holland ordered. We spent 163,000 dollars, and then the new consul, all of you, decided not to build them, when it was the big, because lack of funds. So I heard Mr. Coty, if he said 2.5 million dollars for that, did I hear, right? That's a lot of money. A lot of money that doesn't go to our city's simple repave men. I don't understand all this. We, the citizens, question these things, Mayor. And that's what is my question. Do we are paying double here? We're paying higher salaries to our staff. They keep on increasing staff. Our consul, Man Pontieri, helped us last year with the budget, reducing the budget, and they cut our services, but they increased like seven or 10 positions in staff. This is what we, the residents, see. They cut services that affect me. Now, the PSP lot that they took away from Public Works Maintenance has the weeds up to here in Clubhouse Drive. That was used to be maintained by our Public Works in number, what, 7, Clubhouse Drive, the PSP lot. Now it's like this. This is Mr. DeLorenzo's work, that he goes out there, and he gave it to private contractor. I saw the private contractor once, several months ago. Now, our side of the street with our HOA is perfectly, is perfectly maintained. Public Works maintains all along the golf course, they used to maintain that. But somebody here decided, and I showed to our manager, I showed her what now is even worse, this side, but probably she has somebody over her that didn't allow her to serve that PSP lot. So, you cut our services. Ms. Pontieri wanted to save us taxes, but you don't cut this increase on payroll, and payroll, and hiring, and hiring. So, this is what we see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Anyone else? With that then, I would
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sure, but can we just clarify that this wasn't, like, awarding anything to anyone, that these were just contractual services that we are having on staff, just for some of these projects? It's, I just want to make sure that before
I appreciate that, Councilman. Do you want to just clarify that, make it real simple?
Yeah, real simple is that these are professional services that we have yet to contract with, and these are basically stating the terms of the services that we, if we needed to render, what they would cost, essentially, and caps on that.
And do you just want to comment on the reason that might be needed, just to restate what Carl, Mr. Cody said?
Sure, potentially. One very high-level reason could be the, how complex a project could be, or the threshold for, you know, engineering levels of who we have on staff and what they're capable of.
So it's more about, it's not money spent or money to be spent, it's about refining the process so that we get our best bang for the buck?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good. All right, I have a motion from the Vice Mayor to approve. Is there a second?
Seconded.
I have a second from Councilman Clufus. Any further discussion? And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there, are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That completes the consent agenda. We now move to Agenda Letter I, which is final public participation. I will open up the participation for public comment for any items that were not previously addressed in tonight's agenda. Seeing no one come forward, I will close public participation. I will go to city council members and, you got anything?
Nope, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Pontieri, any final comments for this evening? I heard
No, Mayor.
I heard some joyous laughter in the background, so I appreciate that.
Yes, I have nothing further more. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Nor do I. I'll move forward with the council, final, city manager.
I won't do the same. I just want to make sure I heard everything correctly for tonight's agenda. The short-term rental ordinance will be on the agenda for September 3rd, to work with the county on scheduling a special workshop on the Humane Society. Also, the Humane Society to be a part of the Joint Cities and County Meeting that's tentatively scheduled for September 20th and that agenda item. And if there's anything else that you would like to add on that agenda for that joint meeting, please let me know. Also, on your August 13th council workshop, that you want to discuss having future workshops too a month, so we'll make sure that's on the agenda for you.
Okay, go ahead.
That was all that I heard tonight.
Okay, I think that's correct. I would, with regard to the agenda for the county-city joint workshop.
Sure.
I would like city council to either, through consensus, or to approve the agenda in advance of that meeting.
Okay, I can make that.
Well, I want to make sure that each Well, I want to make sure that each city council member is well-prepared for whatever item might appear, and that agenda is what we're going to discuss.
Okay, I will share that with, I believe Flagler Beach has been coordinating these meetings, so I'll share that with-
Like I said, I just want to make sure that we each are well-prepared and not surprised by any agenda items that might be discussed at that meeting.
Absolutely. I have two feel-good things.
Go ahead.
Okay, Monday is the first day of school, so just be mindful.
Monday is the first day of school. Wow. Okay, let that be heard loud and clear.
And the second thing is, we are getting ready to celebrate the city's 25th anniversary. So, Parks and Rec is going to put together a presentation that'll come before you soon, but you might start seeing some marketing plugs and save the dates and stuff.
What is a 25th anniversary?
Technically, it's December 31st.
No, no, no. What is the, what is the gift of a 25th anniversary?
I think it's a Rolex.
Is it gold?
(laughing)
Diamond? I don't know.
No, I'm not sure we're there yet, but we're working towards that. Okay.
So feel-good stuff. We are working with the Historical Society on planning this event, but you should see a presentation soon and some marketing come out.
Seriously, and I won't ask you for a complete list, but with regard to the first day of school, we get very complacent, and people forget, and all of a sudden, school starts. So are we pushing that out in every channel that we have to make folks aware? Because we have so many people that may not have kids in school. I want them to be fully aware that school has started.
Yes, our communications team is working collaboratively with the Sheriff's Office for also some enforcement, so you'll see that on social media as well.
I really appreciate that. And, as always, staff, we appreciate each and every one of you for all of your support in the back there. So thank you very much. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. We'll second it.
I have, okay, motion second. We are adjourned.